...use the terms interchangeably, you know, they'll say, "Well, this is a public record," meaning it belongs to government. But I think the other way to look at it is that, "Well, it's a government record and it becomes a public record only if one of the exemptions of the right to do it does not apply." See what I mean? And I do the same thing. I'm in an interchanging group as well, I think we all do. So there are a lot of records that can't be disclosed, they're protected by 91.5. And I do think that even if a parent sends a record, sends a complaint to, not just to the school board, but to, you know, other people in the school, to other parents, I've seen situations where a parent has sent a complaint about, they're often about special ed, a complaint about special ed to the special ed on the school board, the superintendent, the governor, people in the legislature and so forth. But the fact that the parent has disclosed it to the whole world doesn't mean you can disclose it, because it's still protected by FERC as far as the school is concerned.
Yep, one more question?
Sure.
So, we've received a concern from a parent regarding a student, sent to the whole board. They send it on the superintendent, he reviews it, they don't like his answer, they appeal to the board. Now I have knowledge of, before, they even come before the board, is it adversely affecting the parent's appeal process? Because now, you know what I mean, it's a catch-22.
Well, the first thing is, the parent who has a complaint about a staff member doesn't have the right to appeal, the superintendent's decision to the board. The only way that comes to the board, under your policy, is if the superintendent chooses to refer to the board. But leaving that aside, the requirement that the board members meet the juror standard, be impartial, not have prejudged the matter, doesn't mean you have to be totally ignorant of the facts. If you're still able to judge the matter fairly, even though somebody has told you something, that's okay, you can still do it. Where you get into a problem is if a board member takes it upon himself, for example, to go into the school to observe instruction, which of course, schools don't know and allow board members to do. But, or a board member on his own decides to investigate the matter involving a teacher. That's a little different from information that you didn't seek out, that somebody provided to you. As board members, when you live in the town, you hear all the scuttlebutt, you know a lot about the teachers and the students. And the New Hampshire Supreme Court thus far has said, "That's okay." Somebody objecting to a board member sitting as a member of the school board, objecting, somebody objecting to a school board member sitting as part of a tribunal, has to be able to show actual bias or prejudgment. The reason I recommend being cautious about acquiring information, if you can avoid it, don't go out and seek it, the superintendent shouldn't be disclosing it to you if a hearing is coming up, is because at some point, it does become difficult to put aside what you've heard. And then you, as a board member, have to decide, "Am I able to judge this fairly based on the evidence that's presented here? Am I going to be influenced by the fact that I saw that this teacher had a terrible evaluation two years ago? Or I took it upon myself to investigate?" So it's, and that's where you move on to problems. The standard advice is that when the superintendent non-renew somebody, or when he's going to be asking the school board to dismiss, he shouldn't discuss any of the details with the board members. But inevitably, somebody on the board, some of the board members, you know, you all hear talk around town, you may have received emails or letters from parents complaining. That doesn't necessarily argue for them, because otherwise, every school board would be disqualified every single time, especially in the state. Yeah, makes it very difficult.
Thank you.
Okay. You have more questions or any, I'll be about beating them dead? Okay, the last thing is just conflict of interest. There are two things to keep in mind. One, we have an incompatible offices statute, which just says that if you're a school board member, for example, you can't also be an employee if the district puts entirely in the statute. The thing to keep in mind, the questions I get is, "Well, what about the town?" Well, there's no conflict, there's no overlap with the town, so a school board member could be a member of the board, select one, although you'd have to be a real lot of money. But you can't, there are restrictions in the statutes about how many school board members can be on the budget committee and that sort of thing, but that's one category. The incompatible offices statute, which for school boards or school districts is the qualification for office statute. The town statute is literally called incompatible offices. The school statute is just the statute that describes the qualifications to be on a school board. They're designed to avoid school board members being put in a situation where they can't judge something fairly, which is why we have those. But the more interesting, the more normal questions we get concern just the traditional conflict of interest, where you don't necessarily have a statute that says it's a conflict of interest, but somehow, there could be a problem. The first thing, the first type of conflict of interest, and again, in the statute it's very simple, is, you know, you're the local, you're the local oil dealer, you want the contract with the school, you also happen to be a member of the school board, I hope not to interrupt. There's nothing wrong with that, except that if you're going to be selling more than $200,000 worth of oil at a time to the school district, which today, probably are, then you have to, the contract has to be awarded by competitive bid, that's all. So there's nothing that says, it just goes, "You're on the school board, you can't provide goods or services to the school district, but if the value exceeds $200,000, it has to be by competitive bid." The other type of conflict of interest is, when do you have to recuse yourself from making a decision about something? And there are three, there are three different capacities in which a board member can be asked to make a decision. One is in your legislative capacity, for example, if you're writing a policy, or you propose a budget, that's acting in your legislative capacity. The other two capacities are quasi-trudicial and judicial. The standard, the standard, if you're acting in a legislative capacity, conflict of interest is limited. Basically, if you're acting in your legislative capacity, the standard is direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome, but isn't the same as that of every other member of the public. If you're acting in a quasi-trudicial or judicial role, the standard is the same standard as applies to jurors, which basically is what we've been talking about, you can't be biased, you can't, there can't be actual analysis. The court has said, the Supreme Court in New Hampshire has said that actual analysis is required to disqualify a board member from, for example, acting in a non-renewal hearing. So it's, and it's not that often that you end up with actual analysis. What's more of a problem is prejudgment, and that's the big problem, that we try to avoid by having board members stay out of it. As far as the difference between quasi-judicial and judicial, quasi-judicial is when the rights of only one person are affected, you're not deciding competing rights. For example, a parent comes in and requests a reassignment under the Manifest of Education and Hardship statute, that's typically a quasi-judicial decision. A judicial decision is a non-renewal hearing, because you have the administration on one side and the teacher on the other. Okay? But it really doesn't matter if the premises of conflict of interest versus standards is the same. And I think that's, that's it. Oh, one other thing. Conflict of interest under New Hampshire law and the incompatible office provisions don't apply to your spouse or your children. So although a school board member can't be an employee under state law, the child of a school board member, or the spouse of the school board member can be an employee. However, Sotomayor has a policy, in its conflict of interest policy, has a nepotism policy, which basically says that you cannot employ the relatives, parents, siblings, spouses, children, or in-laws even, of the superintendent or any member of the board. It doesn't apply to people who were employed since September 2006, but it applies to new hires. So that's, I don't know how often you run into it, I don't know, in a small town, maybe for the Austin, I don't know. Okay.
All right.
That's it.
Does anybody have anything other than, I mean, touched on anything?
No.
Perfect.
Okay. Did we use the word, just to help, the rules of policy, all right? Well, you're welcome. Sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, no, it's definitely.
It's a little good. That's all right. Thank you, you're a good audience.
Okay. Why don't we, we can go into public forum right now, if anybody from the public would like to speak towards the agenda. And the microphone, everything's kind of pushed together here because of the table, so we'd like to have everybody go over to the left-hand side, one mic, please. Yes? And we're gonna need the name and address, please.
Scott Flynn, 32 Central Street, Sotomayor. Ms. Lohman mentioned part of the duties of the board, and this is out of my own ignorance, to approve and help develop the curriculum. And I'm just curious, I know Russ has been pulling together a team of people to look at the vision, mission statement for the school, and I'm just curious how we look at both the short-term and then the longer-term curriculum within the school, for budgetary purposes, and maybe to offer additional, call it AP courses, or vocational training for some students. It's out of ignorance on my part, we've got a lot on the agendas over the last six to 12 months, I'm really interested to know if this is the appropriate forum to talk about curriculum, to get it on the agenda, or if there are committees of people that meet to express ideas, things. We have a very, a wealth of resources within the community. I know Mr. Reed and Mr. Cooney have been working on career days and shadowing and mentoring programs. We have just a wealth of folks in the area that I think can really help get our students in a better position to excel and succeed beyond the walls of Sotomayor. I'm just curious what the current process is, both short-term and long-term, and if it will be on future agendas, or if this is the appropriate forum?
Sure. So, great question, Scott. We do have a curriculum review process in our schools, and it's a four-year, four-stage process. Written in that process in May, each year, the curriculums that have been reviewed and revised will come before the board, they'll be given an outline to the board, the board will accept those, so that the purchase of equipment supplies or utensils can take place. So that's where the board has an opportunity to ask those questions. The other place, as far as course selections and things, we have a program of studies. The program of studies would come before the board as well, when there were major changes in that, and those changes would come from when there are changes to the curriculum. So I think the program of studies came, Sean, when the history, when you did a little change, two years ago, the history of their university?
Yes, that was one year ago.
It was one year ago, okay. So that came before the board, and they approved those changes. So those conversations do happen, typically they would happen in May. As far as curriculum conversation, that's something a board member would like to put on, or a person might have to put on the agenda, but certainly something the board could entertain.
And would that be more appropriate, to the comment of it being public input, would that be more appropriate to start with you at a superintendent's forum, or is the school board meeting?
Yeah, I believe even so, it might, it might take at the school level, where it would be a conversation maybe with a department head, someone in the department, in the guidance department, or the building principal or assistant. It really happened at the school level before it rises up to my level, because I would push it right back down.
If somebody wants to, they teach a class for free?
Right.
Anybody else have any? There are nothing we'll want to?
This, this risk behavior survey?
I'll bring Sean.
I'll bring Sean. And Chief Taylor's here to.
Okay, I believe you have a new packet. Ninety-two different categories, the user survey. Try to do a couple of things of it, look at overall risk behavior, and what we kind of broke it into is calling it more risky or less risky behavior, or equally risky. We looked at the ninety-two categories, Sotomayor High School students were dealing with ninth through 12 graders, a few percent of the students took it. In forty-eight of those categories, we would have been less risky. In twenty-six of those categories, we would have been more risky, and then in eighteen, it was kind of a split, they were comparing it to the region and also to the state. Some of the good information that we, I think it's all good information, but some of the positive information that we found when we looked at drug and alcohol use, was that the students aren't trying it comparatively to the region and to the state at a young age. And so I thought that was something very positive to take away from that. I think the DARE program has a lot to do with that, there's a lot of introduction to that at an early age, and it seems that that certainly lasts with them for a period of time. One of the concerning things we did see was just the percentage of students who, you know, came to school high on marijuana, or who had had more than five alcoholic drinks in a recent time, was higher than we would like to see on that. We do have some things we're gonna work on, one of the other positive things I saw is that we have seventy-eight percent of our students participate in at least one sport. And so one thing to have done is work with the athletic director, and we're gonna take more access from what's called life of an athlete, which really goes with looking at risky behaviors, drug, alcohol, lack of sleep, all of those things. And also touching base with Amanda Christensen, who runs our drama department, and so we think we can get about ten more percent of our students there. So we do have some things in place to kind of address those behaviors, but we're a little concerned with the drug and alcohol rate that we have right now at high school.
What grade levels took the survey?
Nine through twelve took this one.
Okay.
But what they did have is one of the questions, you know, for instance, marijuana use before thirteen, and then, you know, but have you, I don't know the exact wording of it, but, you know, one of them would be the number of percentage of students who came to school high on marijuana, which was high, or currently use marijuana, which was high, and if you looked at the students who tried marijuana before age thirteen, that was low.
So what is your plan for the people who don't fit into that, seventy-eight percent and ten percent, not twelve percent?
We still, I mean, it's, we're still, a couple of things. These things are addressed, they're addressed in the health class, but obviously, we're not getting quite enough of that. One thing, and it's, try to work with the police in working with the parents, because one of the things that really came up is just a lot of, a high percentage of like, have parents who don't even disapprove of, you know, so working with the parents on that. Also, you know, one of the things where I, looking forward to getting more from Life of an Athlete, but ninety percent of our students, because probably the number that bothered me possibly the most, was that they don't perceive the pure wrongness of it. And as we know, middle school and high schoolers, the teachers can say something, the parents can say something, but it's what the other students are willing to do. So we're fortunate that we, we have so many students who do participate in that, so, you know, where large schools, you might only be getting to twenty percent, we'd be getting to ninety percent, just on that. We'll continue to work with the health curriculum to do that, but we're already doing that, the numbers are high.
Do we have something we can plan for the parents? Because that's what I noticed in here is, you know, if the parents are out of the discussion...
So I asked GK Hillfield as well, because he and I have spoken, and actually, again, I mentioned the last meeting I said on the supoium regarding the heroin epidemic. But I shared some of the data with him, and we've had conversations, so Chief, if you want to expand a little.
David K. Hill, Sotomayor, police. So while I share the concerns of the principal, my bigger concerns are, there appear to be no consequences from parents, no consequences if the peers disapprove of it, but not just for drugs, it was drugs, it was the use of, it was unprotected sex, it was all kinds of stuff in here that really rocks us at our core when we talk about our social and our economical communities and stuff. This isn't a school problem, this is an entire community problem. My, my, my thing to the school is, it's all well and good to have a plan to move forward, but you're gonna need more than the school to do this. I would, in my world, I would look towards somebody to put together and facilitate a meeting over this document right here, because it can't be just the school's problem, it can't be just the community's problem, it has to be all of our problem. And in order for all of us to face this problem, we all have to participate in fixing the problem. There is a high number of kids in here that, if you read this and didn't know much about the questions, you think were just reckless in disregard for their own safety, as well as the safety of the kids in the school. This is an alarming report. And my suggestion is that the school find somebody who can facilitate a meeting and involve more than just the school, because we have to open our eyes, we have to open the borders, and we have to involve community members, we have to involve the school district, and everybody to fix this problem, because I don't believe the school's gonna do it themselves.
So Chief, we had talked about potentially looking at some folks to come in and do some pattern groups, I know that we can contact, Sutherland County has a liaison that does this, if they can come in and do that. So, yeah, anything that, again, we can continue to work together.
So we would normally look to our, our insurance companies, and say, we need somebody to facilitate a meeting, because what comes out of this can't be my own thoughts and my own opinions, it has to be collectively all of ours to work on this. So we need to find somebody who can facilitate that meeting, and that it doesn't come out in Dave Cahill's words, it doesn't come out in Sean Woinahan's words, it comes out collectively as a group who have done this. So we would look at our, the town's insurance company, which is, you know, your Primex, your local government center, those kinds of people who are involved in the makeup of all of our communities across the state, to put this all together and to really facilitate those meetings, to bring out the points of everybody, to make sure all those points are addressed and looked at, and to make sure that they see this document, so that when we're talking about it, all the points are addressed during that conversation.
Who are the people that you would want to start, or at least get into spirit, you just have you and Sean, you and, or Donna and Russ, yourself and Sean, maybe just get at least talk and then hand it, or at least get the insurance company involved, and then just get that all rolling out?
I would, I would look at you and Russ to say, "Let's get this moving, I'm certainly happy to help, it'd be a resource, I'm happy to do whatever I've gotta do to bring some people in, or to talk about who may be the best to fit that, and maybe collectively as a group of us talk in, contacting Primex or the local government center, maybe they decide, or, I don't think it's the local government center anymore, but...
Health Trust.
Yeah, Health Trust. So whatever they can bring for us and help with us for, that maybe they say differently, and that we should have these people or this person involved and stuff. But I, I think for the school to take this on is gonna be a huge task, and no fault of their own, but it just may not get what it deserves out of it, and these are our kids, this is serious. And, you know, I think that law enforcement should be involved at some level, I think that the school should definitely be involved, your staff should be involved, and maybe some community members who have something to offer could be involved. I think that collectively, we all need to participate in decreasing these numbers the next time the school decides to do this, because...
Chief, have you seen examples in the used by other towns that have been successful in reducing some of the alarming statistics?
And I guess that's the big thing, is how do you reduce the alarming statistics? And I, and when I look at reducing those, I don't think any one of us individually in here, whether it's our community, the police department, or the school, the school board, or the employees, I don't think any one of them have the answer to it, but I think that's why collectively, we have to get together and figure out what is the best way to do this, and how to do that. I'm not familiar with schools who have, or communities who have done this particular issue, I'm sure there are communities across the state that hold meetings and that have other people, professionals, facilitate those meetings, to make sure that they just don't drag onto somebody listening to themselves talk, probably like me, but, but I think those people will certainly bring those points out.
Sean, sorry. Have we done the surveys, the survey previously? And or so when?
The last time we done it was probably like six or seven years ago.
Okay. So we haven't, we don't have a data point to say, we saw it tracking up and...
We'd seen a period about ten or eleven years ago where we saw, did see some decreases and now we're seeing some increase again. Again, one of the numbers, a couple of numbers which I think were big, but, you know, I'm sure Chief sees a lot too, it's really, it's a huge state issue as well. So one of the numbers that was really concerning was, percentage of students who don't talk about substance misuse with parents, and it was forty-five percent don't talk to parents about drug misuse, yet then you look, it's lower than the regional and the state average, meaning that, you know, state's even worse and the region's even worse. You know, so those are some things.
I think the whole issue too is setting goals, achieving goals, and what are our performances while we're trying to achieve those goals? I mean, we do it all the time, but we do, so we have to set marks to do that, and in order to do that, it's a huge task for one people to take on, I think, you know, there's gonna be a lot of us involved with fixing the problem.
One more question.
When did we start the DARE program?
DARE's been a Sotomayor problem since the early nineties.
Okay, so the kids that answered the survey were graduates, so to speak?
Yeah, there was a period of time, I think, where there was one or two years that it wasn't offered, and then beyond, but I believe that every kid here now, for the past fourteen years, I compare those to being...
So that would lead towards the...
Fifth grade, yeah.
Fifth grade, so the early intervention is successful, it's just catching them after that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to make a sales point to having this policed in the high school, I think that's a benefit, it's, our DARE officer is trained and is certified to teach a curriculum at the high school level, when we talk about older kids and maturity. So we have that resource available to us to be able to do that. Is that gonna solve the problem? Probably not, but it becomes a resource, and it's what we don't have to measure a goal on.
So I would support Sean doing it.
Oh, I just have more data, but I, you know, a couple of other things which, if we look at, sorry, I know you have, there's a lot of information. One of the things we talked with staff is just, you know, the whole overall health and things that come along with just getting enough sleep, and things along those lines. And, you know, one of the things we were encouraged by were the number of percentage of students who weren't physically active, we were well below the state average on that. You know, students using a computer, you know, things along those lines was much lower. Again, and a lot of categories were lower, but still, I didn't like the big. Looking at the bullying thing, there were some bullying questions, the number of percentage of students who did not go to school because they were unsafe, as you see in there, probably the state average is five percent, the regional average was seven percent. For that, no Sotomayor students indicated they felt unsafe at school. Number of students who were bullying on school property, the state average is twenty-two point one percent, Sotomayor had twenty-two point two percent, the region was twenty-nine point seven percent. And then the electronically bullied were about twenty percent, just under that, where the state was eighteen point six and the region was twenty-nine point seven, so we saw that as well, been working on that as well. Some of the drug and alcohol information we saw was, was offset.
What instigated the repeat of this survey?
We've been wanting to do it for quite a while, I talked to Mr. Holden, and there's a period of time where they didn't want to do as many surveys, and I think a lot of that had to do with, you know, there was, some parents were post-taking surveys, and I think also, always being cognizant of the time you're out of class, you know, and so when we look at all the standardized testing and things along those lines, but Mr. Holden and I talked a lot about doing it, really did want to get the data for it, and that's what we've done.
Is this gonna be one we're gonna be doing every year?
Sure, so let me, I guess I have a little bit of chairman over here, so, thank you, Chief, because...
Thank you very much.
There are, there are definitely some issues, again, I think Sean would need to expose that a lot. These are concerning issues around the state, around our country, so let's not misperceive, it's focused, it's central, but we do have an opportunity to do something, and we have an obligation to be able to address the issue. We haven't done these surveys in the past because, and again, I'm speaking from other school districts as well, people get very fearful of this information, right? This, this puts schools on, what's it gonna be in the paper, oh, we have a drug and alcohol problem, you know, oh, the school needs to do something about that, and people are getting fearful of that, because they pull back a little bit. Sean, again, Sean and I, this is something that we know, this happens in every community, we can't just turn a blind eye to it. We have a hand in it, the folks in the audience, the parents, the community, everyone has a hand in it. As you said, we're not gonna solve a SOTOMA, I'll work with Kelly, we'll talk to Primax, we'll, we'll talk to Chief, we'll see if we can bring some information. I do think we have good information that we get to our students, we do need to get to our community, we need to get our parents. It's a tough reality, but our kids are doing things that they shouldn't do. Our kids, as we were all kids, did things we shouldn't do. We take chances, we do things, we step out, we lie, that's what kids do. We have to be aware of that as parents, that that's going to happen, right? We have to stop them from making mistakes before it's something that they, that's irreversible. And so, yep, kids are gonna make mistakes, we're gonna be able to help them get through those things, but let's hope they don't make mistakes, we're gonna prevent them from doing something the rest of their lives. Again, the heroin epidemic that's going on right away, it's just, it's earth-shattering what's going on in the state alone. So I look forward to working with Chief, again, working with the insurance companies, putting things together, whether we can do that by the end of the year or not, we can start off something beginning next year. I think we will get this up on our website, I think another big piece of it, John and I talked about this today, how many of our kids actually go back and look at this and read this? And so I'm gonna encourage parents to open this on their web and read it with their child. They're not asking, "How did you respond?", but, "Look at, there was this many kids that felt this way, or this many kids responded this way, or, you know, do you know kids that perhaps felt this way?" Because kids may not know... do you know kids that perhaps felt this way? Because kids may not know this, this information either. Now, I might have thought I was the only person in school that felt like they wanted to hurt themselves over the last year, but perhaps there's thirteen, fourteen other kids, and so, what are we doing to address all those, all those needs? I'm talking about all the social and emotional needs. So, um, again, I thank you, Chief, for coming and look forward to working with you, and thank you, Sean.
I just have one more thing, I, while we looked at percentages and they seemed like really high, there was only a hundred and thirty kids that participated in the, in the thing itself, so a high number of twenty-four percent is not really a big number when we look at it, and then we look at it as a, um, across the state. Um, so that's been, I did notice that cocaine use, heroin use, some of those issues, was two kids. So, to me, it's the guy that says no, no, no to everything on the map. So, for me, I'm suspicious of that number two, because that shows up in everything along the way. Not that I disregard it, but I am suspicious of the number two, that maybe perhaps two kids didn't take it seriously and just went through, just said yes to everyone. So, uh, it's just my feeling, my experience, um, I do, am concerned about this, and I think that, um, there's probably not anybody in here that's going to read this that wouldn't be concerned, but I, I just wanted to bring that up, that while it is devastating thing to read, they are small numbers compared.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. So we can, maybe we should just keep that as a, do your thing on the agenda, I'll take on this.
Sure, you can say that.
On it, because we really need to, I think we need to keep that fresh on, um, on our mind that that's going to happen, I guess, because I think the boards up here on board, the board definitely wants someone to start moving forward with this period.
So I will, I will-
Do you have a to-do item?
Yeah. That's down the road.
Is there a to-do item for you out of this that you're taking away?
Yeah, I am taking the-
Update?
Yeah, continuation.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm just saying, to-do items, not-
Oh, to-do.
To-do, to-do.
Oh, yeah, this is a test.
You came up with this.
Yes, 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 well, again, Sean and I talked before, Chief and I talked before, so we wanted really just to put this out for the community and for you as a board, um, not really asking permission, but just letting you know that we're going to be moving forward.
Right. Your round table coming up next week?
Uh, four, I'm actually going to, we're going to talk about that, we'll push it off to the twenty-seventh.
Okay, maybe that-
But I could go over some of this as well.
Yeah, wherever you feel that, you know, to make this more aware and just get more attention, because goal setting is going to be a little, it's going to take some time when you start getting in a group and actually start, the goal setting portion is going to be pretty-
Setting goals and realism.
Exactly, because you don't want to have twenty-five of them, you want to have two or three that you can definitely maintain.
Do we plan on testing, testing, round more, surveying again this year?
Yeah, so the, um, survey is done every year for high school students, nineteen twelve?
It's actually done-
Every other year, right?
No, well, it's done in the fall, so these, these are results from the fall, we just got last night.
It's every year, Sean.
So, so it's every year, so we get, take it again next fall.
And the middle school, there was a middle school one, I believe that's every other year.
I know that we took the middle school.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we probably have to revisit that to see what makes-
But we are going to try to get some longitudinal data.
Yeah, yeah.
And track it and see how it is.
Thank you.
Chief, that's something we need community volunteers to, to help organize the event date and-
So once we, once we formulate, I'll come back with a plan and sort of let you know where we're at, but again, there are some folks for Sullivan County who can put all this together, who do this, that are hired to do this, and will use our health insurance company and Chief's resources and see what we can do.
Any other questions on that? Thank you, Sean.
Good to-
Thanks.
Just to confirm, you said this will be up on the website shortly?
Yeah.
Just a summary or the full package?
Yeah, it is.
That's great.
How do you have the summary?
And, uh, you can have the full package.
Does John know you need the full package?
I think it's the screening.
Zone of Regulation.
Okay. Jody, you're up, your Zone of Regulation.
Um, we have our, our guidance department and our Zones, our Zones of Regulation Committee has a presentation that they're going to process.
We just want to get the cookies.
Yeah.
Is that my guy?
That's how I'm here.
John, you're walking the whole time.
We're walking, we just walked. You guys don't have the cookies, dude.
That's how we incentivize it.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll do sound. Do you have a table?
Um, Matt, where would you like to stand, I guess? I need to be-
Sharon. Yeah, Sharon's got her work. Is this the red one here? It says do not touch it. Don't put two of those in.
Yeah. Well, I'll start, that's okay. Um, good evening, my name is Dawn Slayton, I'm the school counselor at the elementary school. I want to personally thank Mrs. Bergen and, um, Mr. Holden for inviting me here tonight to celebrate the success of two programs that we are teaching in the elementary school to support the social and emotional needs of our students.
You need a tech guy to do this?
Yeah, do you want Sean to help?
Yeah.
We've been having a lot of conversations over time-
I turned this picture sketches, yeah.
About, um, an increase in students who have, um, a deficit in executive functioning skills, and, um, we have a slide to show you what those skills are.
We have to back it, no, I'm sorry, your presentation backwards when we get this up. So we were with, that was in the box.
Wait, I didn't rehearse that one, John.
Didn't it, you just see it here, and now I have black screen. Hmm, well, isn't it, it's not your, it's a smaller layer thing?
Yeah, it's not the overhead thing, it's the overhead thing.
You don't, you don't get about that, right?
Hey, the good news is it's a magic pass, so maybe your new computer, so.
Actually, is it in Google Sites?
Yeah.
Can we just jump on somebody's computer, it's, uh, up and running?
Already fired up?
Yeah.
Well, mine was, I had it reading back there, it's very hard.
But not yours, because you know, that is on, go it back yours.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
It's on, I guess.
Do you mind?
Come on, you want to share with me?
Dude, have it.
I want to sit back and eat my cookie.
You're always on call, John.
All right. You've got only two minutes you've got to kill here.
Okay.
All right.
So some of the executive functioning skills, um, like I said, we were, we were seeing an increase in students with deficits in those skills, planning and organization, um, time management, um-
Task initiation.
Task initiation.
What grade levels would the, when you say students, is it the whole-
All stu-, yes, yes.
Okay.
And, um, so we, we were having a lot of conversation about what can we do to support these students who have these deficits. And these are not just students who have been diagnosed, medically diagnosed with these deficits, they're really, a lot of students have problems with attention or...
Task initiation.
Task initiation.
What grade levels would the, when you say students, is it the whole-
All stu-, yes, yes.
Okay.
And, um, so we, we were having a lot of conversation about what can we do to support these students who have these deficits. And these are not just students who have been diagnosed, medically diagnosed with these deficits, they're really, a lot of students have problems with attention or... Here we go. Planning and organization, impulsivity, focus and concentration, attention, flexibility, shift, time management, emotional control, task initiation, and problem solving. So after, um, time, we decided to put together a committee to, um, roll out the Zones of Regulation, and members of the committee are myself and Rebecca Lorden, she is a special education teacher, and Carrie Gross, who is, um, our student support center person, and Sandy Owen, who's our occupational therapist, and Mrs. Bergen, our principal. And the committee met and we, um, found a curriculum, it's called the Zones of Regulation, and it's a curriculum designed to foster self-regulation and emotional control. And what self-regulation is, is the ability to adjust your level of alertness, behavior, and emotions to meet the demands of the environment, reach goals, and behave in a socially appropriate way. So students self-monitor their emotional and sensory needs and develop strategies to help them focus on learning. And how we rolled this out in the fall, um, is we gave them a visual, and these are the four Zones of Regulation. The blue zone, which is, I, what I would, would describe to the kids as when you're sort of down here, sad, or tired, or sick, or bored, um, just sort of moving slowly. And, um, the green zone is happy and calm, and when you're focused and you're ready to learn, and the whole, the whole reason why we're here at school is, is to learn, so we need to be ready to learn. And the yellow zone is frustrated, worried, silly, scared, excited, um, and starting to have some loss of control. And then in the red zone, mad, angry, terrified, um, you sort of physically and emotionally start to lose control. Um, and elation, all the kids love that one, because that's not a bad thing, right? But that's when you win a game and your feet don't touch the floor. So, we all as adults and, and kids, we all are in these zones from one time to another, so it's not just about, it's not just about identifying how you're feeling, it's about being mindful about how you are right now, how you feel right now, and where you are in your space right now. And I asked the students, when I rolled this out, I asked them, um, how many of you have been in the classroom before and, um, you were, your teacher was teaching you, and you were sitting there like you were supposed to, but you were thinking about what you were going to do after school, or the problem that you were going to have that you had at recess time, or, and their hands are going up, like, wow, that happens to me all the time, right? And they're, so they're not, they're not focused. Or how many, I said, how many of you have ever noticed that sometimes your leg's moving up and down, or you're tapping at your desk, or maybe that you're not even sitting at your desk, maybe you're actually standing at your desk? Some people put their hands up. The purpose of getting them to, um, recognize where they are in space is so that we, they can develop strategies to get them back in the green zone so that they're ready to learn and, um, feel comfortable. So some of the, um, also, I just wanted to sort of back up Rebecca, also, it's not just how you, how you are, but it's, when you're in that zone, how are you affecting others? So if you can develop strategies to get yourself back in the green zone, then you, you may be affecting three other people sitting next to you. If you're in the red zone and you're angry and you're losing control, then you're making five other people maybe scared, so they're in the yellow zone. So, we can get you to understand what zone, which zone you're in, and get back into the green zone, then where you're ready to learn, um, and you can be focused, that's where we want you. So, the, the strategy that I am most excited about is the, um, is that we, um, had all students make a Go binder, Go meaning get organized, um, this is, this is for all students, K through five. And inside the Go binder, some of you parents have probably seen these at home, um, are, it's just a, is your schedule, it's an overview of what's in your binder, this, this binder goes, um, with you home every night, back every morning, and, um, the school calendar, the, any kind of, um, schedule that you have, so if you're home at night and you're like, oh, what do I need to bring tomorrow? I have PE, okay, I need to put my sneakers in my backpack. Um, it's more about developing the habit, right? So we had to get, put everything in one spot, it's like one-stop shop, go to your binder, go to your binder when you need the multiplication table, any kind of resources, when you need to remember what your password is to log into your computer. Um, this is a folder for ho-, a homework folder, a communications folder for parents. Um, all the, of course, each developmental, um, stage, every level of, uh, grade level have, it looks a little different depending on what the needs are and what the homework is and that sort of thing. Um, and on the back, um, we have just a reminder about the Zones of Regulation. So, um, that's been a great tool for the kids, and I ask, I still ask them, uh, here we are at the end of the school year, I can't believe it, do you bring your, you still have your binders? Yes, how many of you use them every day? Everybody's still using them or they, are they helpful? Yes, they're still helpful. So, it's been a great, it's been a great tool. Um, the other thing that we provided to all classrooms is a sensory kit, um, with all kinds of fidget tools, we call these tools not toys. So, for, for some students, this was not a good idea. This is more of a distraction, but for other students who need help with focus, who are fidgety, who do this, it helps them focus. And it's so simple, and it's not a distraction, it's such a, it's such a simple tool. So, all the, all of the classrooms were, um, given a, um, kit of sensory tools. Um, there is, um, the Go noodle and Brain Gym are both online programs, um, that help students, uh, some of our staff will, um, the teaching staff will take a couple of minutes and do a lesson, a Go noodle lesson, which may be yoga, it may be stretching, it may be indoor recess, it may be breathing. Um, now, in the Zones of Regulation, not only are we trying to get kids to know how they feel, but, and, and use strategies to get them into the green zone, but also, when you're in these zones, what is your body feeling like? Are you, are you, you have a, you know, if you're in the yellow zone, you have a rapid heart rate, or your palms sweaty, are you, um, you know, just symptoms that you find, dry mouth, um, and what can you do to help your, help your symptoms when you're in that zone? So, um, Go noodle has a great section on breathing, deep breathing, um, thinking calming thoughts. So all of these things we've been practicing, and all of these strategies we've been using all year. Another thing that I, that I think's a huge success is our Student Support Center, and Carrie Gross has done an amazing job, um, supporting, supporting kids in the Student Support Center, and basically I see her as sort of the, the gatekeeper or triage. Um, students will initiate a break, or teachers will initiate a break for a student, and they will go with a slip to, um, the student support room, and Carrie will say, what do you need? Um, if the student feels like they're low and they need a little exercise or a little movement, um, they could be sent to, um, OT, the OT room. If they need, if they're having some emotional difficulties, um, she may say, I will see if Ms. Laiton can see you. I'm not as accessible, because I'm either teaching or I'm seeing kids, um, individually, but Carrie can make, kind of make those determinations. Do they need to see Mrs. Bergen for a, um, a problem they had at recess time that needs, you know, some disciplinary action? And, um, are they not feeling well, do they need to go to the nurse? So she, she, she doesn't want to keep them out of the classroom for any more than ten minutes, she sort of assesses the situation, finds out what they need, gets them back in the green zone, and sends them back to class. So, that is, um, Student Support Center.
I didn't know if you needed the graphs.
That's it. Oh, you can take it back to that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Rebecca. So, um, we did get some, um, some data about how often kids were, um, accessing the break room, and was this a student-initiated break or a teacher-initiated break for the student, or was this another staff member? Were this, were students in a unified arts class or someplace else? And as you can see by the, um, the graph here, um, most of the, we started collecting, um, data at the beginning of the school year, and most of, most of this shows that there were more teacher-initiated. And I think, um, I'd like to see what, what we're working on, and what I'd like to see more of is student, a student recognizing that they need a break and advocating for themselves and taking, and initiating the break. Um, so I'd like to see that change a little bit, and, um, although I think would be a great idea, a great thing that they would recognize that, what I think would even be better is not only did they recognize it, but they did something in the classroom to remedy it, and stayed in the classroom, did their deep- in the classroom to remedy it, and stayed in the classroom, did their deep, their, their breathing silently, did their calm, you know, calm thinking, or whatever they needed to do to get back in the green zone so they could focus. So, that's kind of the way I'd like to see those statistics change a little bit, but we're working on it. We have a lot of interventions and, and things happening in terms of social skills. We have lunch groups, we have social skills groups daily. We have support for kids after school in the homework club. Lots of visuals throughout the school reminding kids about the zones. And I think it's been a great initiative for our school this year. I think it's been a huge success. And I know that the net, another, the other, the other program that I teach as well is called the Second Step Program, which is a violence prevention curriculum. And that kind of goes hand in hand with the zones of regulation. It's empathy training and conflict resolution and anger management. The empathy training is, we hit on that a lot with kids. And that curriculum is a picture that I show the kids of real, real, real kids, real peers in real situations. And they, they learn how to recognize how others are feeling by looking at their facial expressions, their body language, the situation that they're in, and then they do role plays. So, that's how they get a lot of, that's how they learn a lot about empathy, and that leads up to some more higher level thinking so we can help solve problems and help look for a solution and anger management. So, do you have anything else? Anything else about those programs?
No, I think you, I think you've pretty much touched on everything. We are, we have a lot of systems in place for our students. And it's been the committee that's been working on integrating them all, but also the classroom teachers who are doing the Go Noodle in their classrooms to get, to give their children breaks, who are using the consistent language of these programs in every area of the school so that the students are used to the language of, is this a big problem or a little problem? Is this, what are your time robbers right now? What's taking the energy, you know, the, the time away from the task that we need to do? You know, what, how are you feeling right now? What zone are you in? And it's because the whole school has embraced the initiative that our students are really starting to internalize all of those things.
I wa...
So, I was just going to say, one thing that you didn't mention in your conversation is you also sent a packet home to the parents explaining to us, you know, I have a third grade girl, I, we are in a lot of zones on a daily basis. So, that was a really useful tool for me as the parent to understand what it is you're trying to teach, to use consistent language, to keep that process moving between home and school, because we need them to be comfortable with this direction. And I think that was a big part of it was educating the parents and bringing it home too.
It's going to be most effective if we're all doing it together and speaking the same language, I agree. I always have to share something. I am the school counselor, so here's my, here's my share for tonight. I, we had a yoga mindfulness after-school program that I taught, just ended yesterday. And I, as a treat, I handed out worry stones. And inside was a description of, you know, what worries, what you use a worry stone for, and you rub it and you become less worried, and you can take that home. And when you, when you're worried, you can bring it out and think about what we did in yoga, some of the stretching, some of the breathing, some of the thinking calm thoughts. So, today is smarter balance testing day, and I was in the third grade, and a little boy came up to me who was in my yoga class and said, Ms. Slaton, do you have a worry stone? And I said, I said, no, where's yours? And he said, I took it home. And I said, well, have you used it yet? And he said, yeah. He said, I used it this morning when I thought I was going to be late to school, and I thought great. That was a success. So, anyway, thank you very much for listening and for supporting the social emotional needs of our kids at school.
The Second Step Program, what age group is that in with? What grades?
That's K-5 as well.
Oh, everyone's school, is it? Perfect, okay.
Now, I've been teaching the Second Step Program for eight years, so as long as I've been here. It's been, it's also been around for 20, 25 years, something like that. And it's a well-known, Dr. Malcolm Smith highly recommended that, he was here this year, and we have a couple of experts in executive functioning. Peg Dawson has been here, Eric Mann. So, we're, we've, we, sometimes we have been very focused on academics, obviously, we're a school, but I think, I think this is a good direction. I'm certainly, I'm certainly going to push this because we really need to be in the right zone in order to learn, and, and kids really need strategies to learn, to get there, so...
I wanted to make more comment. I applaud your efforts with this. I feel it's quite in touch with the needs for our students of today, and especially that social emotional piece. And I see how effective it is at the elementary level. And so, I want to applaud, you know, the administration and the teachers who have embraced this, and the children who have so readily adapted and benefited from it. I do have a question in terms of knowing the preliminary outcomes of this, are there any plans to implement a similar program in middle or high school?
There's been talk, particularly with some of the executive functioning skills we've looked at, incorporating that in the sixth grade and private courage to care program and using some of those as well.
I do think that there are some really positive features of, of the programs, and that whether we're children or adults, we can identify with those.
These are lifelong skills.
Especially the zones of regulation.
Absolutely.
And that some of the coping mechanisms and the tools that are available through those programs can be transferable to other levels and even at the staff level. So, as I, again, I just wanted to wrap up that comment with...
Thank you.
With a real positive promotion of that.
Thank you. Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Good effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for 9 hours of forework.
Okay.
I thought that there was a lot of, you just had to touch your butt, that's why I asked you to do it.
That was good.
School updates?
School updates.
You're not going to leave it on?
I don't know if...
Paying no attention to the...
It's not.
I don't know if it was too quick or not.
You wish.
Elementary school update.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, our third and fourth graders are in the midst of taking the Smarter Balance assessment this week. I'm next. They're the first group, the, the window is like, you know, 100 weeks long if the third and fourth graders are the first to take it. So, they started on Monday, and fifth grade's going to take the test after April vacation. We have a school-wide talent show next Wednesday at 1:30. Now, this is a talent show that is organized by our fifth graders. It is supported by Mrs. Campbell, our music teacher, but it's always fun to see how they coordinate all of that. Jackie Creedon, the guidance counselor from the middle high school, and I participated in the school choice open house at Croydon on March 19th. And so far, we have had two tuition students, our district or SCES, and we, I have one more tour on tomorrow. And then our four destination imagination teams from the elementary school competed on March 19th at the regional tournament in Sutton. Our Rising Stars teams, that's team, that's the youngest kids, grades K and 1, they don't compete, but they just kind of get a feeling for what it, what it's like to present. Our second and third grade team came in fourth place in their challenge, and we had two four, five teams, both came in second place in their respective challenges. One of them moved on to the state tournament and came in fourth in the state tournament this past weekend. So, we'll have to, that's over, over in this room.
So, the talent show is, welcome to that or...
Absolutely, Wednesday at 1:30, come on down.
Wednesday at 1:30.
Yep, it's in the showmanship.
Talent show. It's a highlight.
There you go.
Okay, Sunday Middle High.
All right. Mostly you probably haven't seen your project...